Good evening, everybody. It's a full house. It's good to see. All right, so I'd like to call this work session to order. This is the work session of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, to be held May eighth, 2018 at six P. M. at the Council Chambers Building. Deputy Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Althaus.
Here.
Councilmember Norman.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Hargie.
Here.
Councilmember Henry.
Here.
Vice Mayor Allen.
Here.
And Mayor Linsky.
Here, thank you. Okay, there are three items for discussion tonight. First up is presentation from Slaven Management Consultants for Executive Search Services for Recruitment of a New City Manager. Evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Amanda Wilber, the H. R. Manager. Tonight kicks off the first of three presentations on the search for our new city manager. Tonight we have with us Paul Winbert from Slaven Management Consultants to share with you his firm's vision for our upcoming executive search. With that, I'll turn things over to Mr. Winbert to introduce himself and present on behalf of Slaven Management Consultants.
Thank you.
Good evening. It's really amazing you get this many people here to hear recruitment consultants. It's really exciting stuff, let me tell you. No, I'm really happy to be here. Arizona is my home now, wasn't originally, but so let me just give you a real quick background on our firm, myself, try and move through this as quickly as possible and find out what questions you want that you have. So, our firm is about forty years old. Bob Slaven is the president and owner of the company. We're one of the few national practices in local government executive recruiting, so we have people all over the country. I live in Mesa, Arizona. I said Bob's in Atlanta. There's someone from California that would be helping me on this assignment if we get lucky enough to be chosen, so. So, having said that, my background was as a city manager and I was from the Midwest, worked in three different states in the Midwest, and I came out of Arizona many, many years ago to get my master's degree. And at that point, then I got an internship with the city of Mesa. So I was there about four years then, went back for career opportunities in the Midwest, and then came back again in two thousand to Mesa, and I retired from there in two thousand and seven as their deputy city manager. So that's my background. So for the last eleven years, I've been doing management consulting and executive recruiting. And the firm that I actually chose was Slaven. The reason for that was, over my career, I'd had a lot of interviews, I'd met a lot of recruiting firms, I felt that Slaven was the only one that really gave me a fair shake and wasn't totally a hundred percent concerned about the client. Because if you're smart about this, you've got to serve your customers. Sorry, tend to talk in my arms, so. It's just, he had a great way that I've found that he really did care about the candidates who were going to be going for the position and so forth, so. So, anyway, that is a little bit about our team. So there's two really key things. I've done about eighty-five of these recruitments, either all by myself or with someone else or helping someone else over the last eleven years. And it took me a while to realize this, but these things cannot be predicted how they're going to go. Try it, it won't happen, I guarantee you. It's very, what's the word I'm looking for? It is, oh, I'm sorry, can't think of the word, it's not important. The bottom line is this, no two recruitments are the same, so how are we going to do a better job than anybody else? And that comes down to a lot of things, but basically two things. When we start the search, we'll spend as much time here as you'd like us to, up to three days, interviewing citizens, obviously council members, staff, community leaders, citizen activists, we don't care. We want, the more people we interview, the more we're going to really know what you need and what you're looking for. Because, you know, everything isn't rosy, the best communities in the world have problems, whether it's Scottsdale or Beverly Hills or whatever. So, we want to spend as much time and ask you to open up to just anybody that you would like us to talk to. That's great. So that's the first part. The second part is something that I don't think any of the firm does anymore. Once we get down to the place where you picked the finalists, you want to interview four or five people typically, we go to their work sites where they're at today, and we do anywhere from a three to five hour site visit with each one of those people. We ask them for reference checks, so we can do face-to-face reference checks, which are extremely valuable, much more so than what you get with a phone reference. And we would ask for a tour of their city hall, tour of the community, kind of see how they interact with staff members, with community members. Occasionally, we find someone who doesn't want us to do that much of a site visit because they're concerned about their job prospects, their current job, but, and we honor that. I mean, we don't want to, we don't want to hurt anybody's confidentiality, but it's going to have to come out anyway. Let me say this, almost every search I see now for a city manager, they have some kind of community involvement. It might be a community meet and greet, where you have a reception area and you have the candidates kind of stand around far apart from one another so that does not do the grandstanding and stuff, and it should be advertised in the newspaper and your website, and let the public come in and meet these people, to find out what they really think about them. So, what I'm trying to say is, if you're in this game to be a city manager here, you know your name's going to be, it will not stay confidential the whole time through. We never have them to do, we don't recommend it really, needing more transparency than that. So, usually, they will let us talk to people on those site visits, which is very helpful. Just a little bit of our track record, we've done over nine-headed recruitments, we've done over three hundred for city and county managers in just about every state in the country. We've only had three people leave within the first two years of employment. The reason that's important is we give a guarantee. So, we guarantee you that that person will work out for you, and if they leave for any reason, whether it's they got terminated, they left on their own, we had one, it sounds kind of crazy, but the person passed away, actually, and was within the two years, we went back in and did the search for him. So, we have a real good track record there. Usually people stay more than two years, and more than ninety-five percent of our placements have remained for more than five years. Our diversity track record is good. We have placed about twenty-five percent of our placements have been from protected groups, minorities, age protection, whatever the case may be. And we think the quality of our brochures is good, and other clients have said that. You know, we're trying to do something, it's going to have a lot of substance to it, talk about the pros and cons of community, what are the big issues, et cetera, et cetera. But we want it to be a marketing piece, too, so we wanted to really highlight it. Just a true confession, I've never been to Cottonwood till today, and just a little, my wife and I drove up today, and just what I've seen so far, I mean, you've got a lot to sell here. It's a beautiful, not scenery, tons of really interesting-looking restaurants, you know, every city of this size in Arizona, you can't say that about. And I've worked for some of them. We'll cover that later. Let's see here, you know, I'd rather just stop at that point. I could go into more, let me do one other thing. Let me just give you, we have seven steps to our work plan. Let me review those really quickly. The first is developing the recruitment profile. I've already talked about that, the time here upfront to write that profile. When we get a draft, we'll send it to you until the council has given us the okay, once you do give us the okay, then that's what we use to market the job. The second step is recruiting candidates. So we keep a database of candidates. We have a large network of people, and a lot of the people in our network aren't people that would want this job, but they know of others who do. So we send out literally hundreds of emails right upfront with the recruitment profile and to start to get inquiries that way. Then, the best ones we find, if they haven't applied, we will call them on the phone and try and convince them why we think it's going to be a good fit for them. If it is, if it's not going to be a good fit, we won't pursue them. Some city managers only want to work in a metropolitan area, some only want to work in a rural area, so, you know, every, there's thirty-five hundred city and county managers, I think, so, there's a job for anyone, but they're all different. Of course, we do the main advertising that anybody would do, and then we also send the recruitment profile to those who, just on paper, look like they meet your criteria, whatever your main criteria is, someone that's worked in a rural community, someone that's very familiar with tourism, and whatever else, you know, I'm just guessing, but once we know what your priorities are, we start in Arizona and we'll hit, a lot of it is largely based on the population, you know. So we'd be looking at maybe city managers from seventy-five hundred on up to twenty, thirty thousand maybe, and assistant city managers from maybe twelve to fifty thousand. And we do that for Arizona, and then we just keep going to the other states. You're going to draw better from this part of the country. Everybody does, it's just kind of the way they, you know, most people are living somewhere for a reason, so, you know, it's not necessarily the hundred and twenty-degree heat that we get down the valley. So then, when the deadlines pass, our firm will review all the applicants. We would submit ten to fifteen semifinalists, who we think are the best ones that we have talked to so far. Prior to giving you that report, we'll have a phone interview with them, we'll have them fill out a written supplemental questionnaire. This will go into detail about things that are important to you, and to have them put into writing how they think their experience matches up with the things that are important to you. So then we'll come and meet with you with that report. At that point, we ask you to select four or five people you want to interview. Then, from there, we go on the site visits and we do the background investigation, which every other firm does, checking court records, credit history, verifying their college degrees, that type of thing. We help you set up the interview process. We will attend the interviews here. If you need help with facilitating the employment agreement with the person that you want, we can help with that. And last, once it's all done, and we will check back in with the mayor and the city manager twice over the next year, six months and twelve months, just to see how things are progressing and if you need any help. And if you do, we'll come back for free and give you whatever kind of help. Once a while, we get a request like a team building session, like, for some reason, maybe the council, the manager aren't gelling real well, and we would come back at no cost and do a team building session with the manager and you and staff or whoever. So, that's it. I'm all talked out, so I've opened up to any questions anybody has.
Any questions from council for Mr. Winbert? No. I do have a couple. Did you have a question?
No, go ahead.
The, how do you determine the, what's a good fit for Cottonwood from your list of applicants?
That's what's so important about the front end, to find out what is really, what are your major issues, and there's always surprises. Even cities that I've worked for, like down the valley, that I thought I knew everything about them, and then you go there for two or three days, and you find out it's not exactly what you thought it was, either better or worse. So we get all that down in writing, and we talked to the candidates about it, we said, okay, this is the criteria, do you think you fit this criteria? And, but, I think the best way we judge that fit, well, you give us a criteria upfront, we finish the candidate site visits, once a while, we'll be calling you up and say, hey, this person is not what we thought this person was going to be, and we recommend you don't interview them. So that's, it kind of just happens naturally, but we really need to know what is your fit, and we'll talk about that a lot.
Okay. And then, can you walk us through the interview process? You said you would help assist with that interview process, but what does that look like?
Well, we give you recommendations, there's everything under the sun. This is what I recommend at a bare minimum, you want to have a, obviously, the city council needs to interview them. We like the department directors and other staff, if appropriate, to be one of the interview panels. Holding that meet and greet that I mentioned, it's very helpful. Sometimes we give them written exercise ahead of time, and even maybe ask them to come to part of the interview with you, might be making a PowerPoint presentation about some situation that relates to things that are going on here. Sometimes there's community leader panels, they, a lot of times they don't work, is because they, the people on those panels feel kind of empowered, and, you know, bottom line, with all the transparency and everything else, there's still only one group that makes the selection, and that's you. So, we don't want to set up a situation, which I've seen happen, where you end up alienating a lot of leaders in the community that you were reaching out to help you. So, that's a real tough one. If you think you can do it in a way and make it absolutely clear that they're not making a decision, they're really not making a recommendation. When they're done, they're supposed to come in either in writing or come into a council meeting talking about, well, here's the five candidates here from our standpoint, here's the pros and cons, and then that's just one more piece of information you take in before you make your decision.
Okay. But you have worked with community leader groups in the past?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. All right. Any other questions?
No. Good.
Well, welcome to Cottonwood.
Yeah.
Sure appreciate you coming up from Mesa, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thought we'd just turn it into a mini-vacation, so.
Well, I hope you do, you know, walk downtown there.
Yeah.
Help yourself, so.
I've been driving around, so, anyway. Good luck with whatever else you're dealing with tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Well, speaking of which, we'll just get right into it, then. Next on the agenda is presentation and direction of staff regarding water and wastewater capacity fees for new development. And I should say, there are, if anyone would like to address the council on any item that's before us tonight, there are yellow forms in the back on a table, and hopefully there's a pen back there. If there's not, you can borrow one from your neighbor and fill out a form, and then you'll be able to address the council.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Rudy Rodriguez, I'm the deputy city manager for the city of Cottonwood. Today, we have Kevin Burnett from Willand Group making a presentation on capacity fees. As you may recall, several years ago, we did away with our impact fees. The legislation that came out from our legislators were a little bit too onerous for a small organization such as ours to manage. The reporting requirements were getting worse and worse, not in a bad way, but just getting more and more difficult and more and more time-consuming, and we just don't have the staff. So we did away with the impact fees then. Over the years, we've talked about continued growth, we have several large subdivisions breaking ground, and we've been talking about capacity impact fees, and then came the thought about using capacity fees versus impact fees. This council's had a discussion before about which way to go, and council decided that capacity fees were the route to follow. And there's a couple of differences, some of the big, some of the differences, of course, is the ease of tracking and reporting capacity fees versus impact fees. Fees are collected on construction, okay, that impacts the entire system, both inside and outside the corporate limits. And then, they can also be, they can only be used for water and wastewater. One of the issues with impact fees that has caused a lot of problems for a lot of municipalities is that many cities use impact fees not only for water and wastewater, but they also use it for street, for libraries, for parks, for police departments, fire departments, and maintenance and operations of those departments. The city of Cottonwood has always stayed true to the original idea of impact fees, and that was water and wastewater. With that being said, the capacity fees fit in real well into what the city of Cottonwood does instead of impact fees. With that being said, we were going to have Pat Walker, apparently there was some sort of a concert down in Cave Creek, and they blocked off the road, and she got stuck and won't be able to make it. But we, Kevin will head it very well first on the capacity fees, and he'll go ahead and handle it. I do want to mention that we had a discussion with a couple of the contractors a few weeks ago, and they were, they were very, very polite and very, very attentive, and they had some real good discussion, we had a lot of good feedback. And part of the discussions, as you may recall, we sent out one set of capacity fees, and we went back and looked at them again and realized that there was an omission, not necessarily on our consultants' part or on our part, it was just an oversight as far as our wastewater treatment plant over riverfront. They were under the assumption that there was cash available for it and not actually built. And our cavers, when it comes to construction, regardless of the size, when it is not turned on and ready to go, it's treated as construction progress until it's timed, they actually turn the key and it's fully functional. Well, we were, they were looking at it as we have money available for it to get built, we were looking at it, city was looking at it as it's already going, and apparently somewhere along the line, we kind of had some miscommunication. Once we went ahead and plugged that plant ready to go as operational, even though it isn't, the cost of it was included in the calculations, and it lowered the rates significantly, as you know, by about two thousand dollars. With that being said, I'd like to introduce Kevin to go ahead and go through the program, and we'll both be here, of course, to answer any questions.
Very good. Evening, thanks for being here.
Thank you. Yeah, as Rudy said, Pat Walker, Pat Walker Consulting was supposed to be here with us tonight, but apparently Taylor Swift had other ideas, and her T. V. S. kept saying, recalculating, recalculating, recalculating every time she tried to go down the street to get up here, so you're stuck with just me tonight, but she will be here next week for the public hearing on that one. So all we wanted to go through with you tonight was a review of the purpose of the study. Rudy gave a bit of an overview on that already, an overview of capacity fees themselves, the calculations that we went through, and then what we're proposing for our capacity fees for Cottonwood. So with that, the purpose of the capacity fee study was to recognize the fact that when new development comes online, it places an impact both on your water and sewer system, and there's a cost to that impact. There's capacity that's being used up in your system when these new connections come online. So the purpose of the capacity fee is to recognize what that cost is, what the value of that capacity that's being used up is, and making sure that new development is paying for that capacity that they're using as opposed to recouping those costs from existing rate payers. So they're one-time payments as opposed to your water rates or sewer rates that come out monthly, so this is a one-time fee that gets paid when you connect to the system. It reflects the demand and costs created by that development. To the extent that there is outstanding debt service, it could be used for that, we don't have any in our calculation here, because we didn't have any growth-related outstanding debt. And there has to be a rational nexus between the fee and the service that's being provided, so we can't just arbitrarily look around and see what your neighbors are charging and decide, we want to be what your neighbors are charging. We have to say, what is the value of the capacity here in Cottonwood? What capacity is being demanded by that new development? And make sure that we've got that appropriate connection between the two. So there's three main methodologies that we look at, a buy-in, an incremental, and a hybrid. Unfortunately, there isn't a book out there, or we can't go to a website and look up Cottonwood and say, aha, this is the approach that we need to use for Cottonwood. And that gets somewhat into what Rudy was talking about, where originally on the sewer side, we were looking at the incremental approach, because we were saying you've got twelve and a half million dollar plant expansion that you're going to be building, so that makes sense to us that that would be the approach that we would use. Through our due diligence, we went back and looked at it, it wasn't on the fixed asset listing for what, for the reasons Rudy said. It's not quite operational yet, but it has been built, so you really don't have any sewer-related capital being built over the next ten years that's going to provide additional capacity, so that caused us to go back a little bit. So, we're going to use the incremental approach on the water side, and I'll talk about that in a minute or two, and then we're looking at the buy-in approach on the sewer side. So you don't have to use the same approach for each system that we're looking at here. So on the water side, like I said, it was an incremental approach, so we looked at what capital projects, what capacity-related projects are going to be built over the next ten years to provide additional water capacity to new connections. And we're only looking at growth-related capital projects, so if you're repairing and replacing a water line, doing anything like that, those aren't capacity fee eligible, they're not part of the calculation. It's only projects that are going to add new capacity to the system, provide benefit to those new connections. So we had a look at what the C. I. P. was over the next ten years. There wasn't any growth-related debt service, so we didn't have that in the calculation, so it was a pretty easy calculation for us on the water side. So you've got about two point four million dollars worth of capital projects anticipated to go for the next ten years, no growth-related debt, so the value of the system is two point four million dollars, that's the value of the capacity over the next ten years. We then went back to the master plan, we looked at the water master plan, and it identified the capital projects that we're adding have a capacity of five hundred and seventy-six thousand gallons per day. The average flow for a residential customer is two hundred and seventy gallons per day, so on an equivalent dwelling unit basis, we're saying that one equivalent dwelling unit uses two hundred and seventy gallons per day of water. So then the next step was just to divide A by B. So we've got the five hundred and seventy-six thousand gallons of capacity, each equivalent dwelling unit serves two hundred and seventy gallons per day, so that tells us that the capital that we're building over the next ten years can serve an additional two thousand one hundred and thirty-two equivalent dwelling units. So then the next step again is taking that two point four million dollars of value, that's what we said the value of the capacity was going forward, the number of units that can be served over the next ten years, that twenty-one thirty-two, comes out with a fee per equivalent dwelling unit on the water side of one thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars. So that one thousand one hundred and twenty-four is an equivalent dwelling unit, but not everybody that connects to the system is going to be an equivalent dwelling unit. So, what we've done here is we've said, based on the American Water Works Association, they tell us that a one-inch meter, for example, has the flow capacity that's one point six seven times higher than a three-quarter inch meter. So what we've said is, if one dwelling, equivalent dwelling unit is one thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars, a one-inch meter should be one point six seven times higher than what that one is, because it's going to use one point six seven times more water than an equivalent dwelling unit is. Same for a one and a half inch meter, what their flow is. So that's how we got to these capacity fees for the larger meters, it's based on how much flow can go through that meter, how much more capacity is that meter size going to be used or not. So if we move into sewer, so this is where we looked at the buy-in approach, given that we've added the new treatment plant expansion has been added into the fixed assets for our analysis, so it's got additional capacity to serve as well, which is one of the issues with the buy-in approach. We want to make sure that there is available capacity in the existing system in order to use this approach, so we've identified that there is available capacity. When we look at this, it's a little bit more complex than the previous option was, so we went through, we looked at- So we went through, we looked at all of the fixed assets on, on the town system, of all your wastewater assets. We looked at what year they were originally purchased, and then we said, if we had to purchase that asset today, what would it cost us to buy that asset today? So if it was bought in 1970 for a million dollars, it's not going to cost a million dollars to buy that asset today. So we escalate up into today's dollars using an inflationary index. So we bring the entire system up to what would it cost to buy that system today? But at the same time, we're not asking development to buy into a brand-new system. It is an older system, it has depreciation in it, so we're recognizing the fact that it does have depreciation, and we're backing out the accumulated depreciation from what that value of the system is today. We did have some cash balances that had been accumulated over time from, from past investments, so that's going to be something that will benefit new development as they come in. And then we've got debt principles. So some of those assets that are on the books today were paid for through debt. There was debt issuances to, to buy those assets to begin with, and the debt service is going to be paid for through rates going forward. So if we were to include those assets in the calculation and charge that new development debt service through their rates going forward, we'd be double counting or double dipping, if you will. So the last part of the valuation calculation was saying, the outstanding debt service related to those fixed assets needs to be deducted from the calculation, because that debt service is going to be paid through rates going forward as new people connect to the system. So those are the three components there. We've got the asset valuation, bringing it up into today's dollars. We subtract out the depreci, accumulated depreciation, and then the, the principal on the debt that was used to pay for those assets. So that gives us this current system value of 51.2 million dollars for your wastewater We did the similar approach, we went back to the ma, to the master plan and said, what's the equivalent flows for an equivalent dwelling unit? And it's lower on sewer than it is for water, which is pretty common. So we've got the total capacity of the plant, so the existing plant plus the new expansion gets us 1.8 billion gallons per day of flow. The use per equivalent dwelling unit on the sewer side is 158, so that tells us that we can serve 11,381 dwelling units from the plant. We've got the system value there again at the 51.2 million dollars, and 11,301 units can be served, getting us a fee per equivalent dwelling unit of 4,502. And as Rudy said, this came down about $2,000 from where we were a couple of weeks ago before we switched approaches.
May I interrupt you there for just a second? I'm curious why the EDUs are higher for the sewer than on the water. Can you explain that to me?
Yeah, so on the sewer side, we're saying that the plant, the total capacity of the system is 100, 1.8 million gallons per day, and then the flow per EDU is 158, so you can serve 11,381 dwelling units out of that. When we go, we go back to the water side, we were looking at, what's the capacity of just the expansion-related piece over the next 10 years? So you're looking at 576,000 gallons per day of capacity as opposed to the 1.8 million associated with the new plant, so that's why we've got the difference between that.
Okay, thank you.
And then we took the similar approach, so we had the 4,502 is the, is the rate per EDU, and then as you increase meter size, you're taking up more capacity, you're using up more of the system capacity, so you have to pay incremental higher fee for that capacity being used up. One of the things that we're always asked is, how do we compare to our neighbors? It's not something that Pat and I normally like to get into, and these are some of the reasons why here, because you can never have a truly apples-to-apples comparison when you're, when you're trying to compare some sys, compare systems, but at the end of the day, we get asked anyways. So some of the reasons why you might be different is persons per household and water use, lot size, if it's a bigger lot, it's going to take up more capacity, age of the system, all of these different line items there. But with all that being said, we did put together a comparison of where you would end up compared to, to several other cities that have development capacity fees. So on the water side, you would be at the far-left end of the spectrum there. You would be the lowest of those in, in the area. On the sewer side, you're more towards the right half, a little bit higher than the average there. Again, when we were looking at this a couple of weeks, you were up at the 6,000 levels, you were closer to Yuma. Now you've fallen back down a little bit between Casa Grande and Clarkdale. So then we've got some next steps there on how we would move forward with this. I won't read all that to you. I'll just leave it up there. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try and answer them for you.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Burnett?
I need a clarification just on the different approaches. It sounds as though with the incremental approach, we can't use the impact fees toward debt that may have been incurred prior to approving the fee, but for the buy-in approach, we can. Is that correct?
Right, so if you were using the incremental approach to the extent, it, the incremental approach is forward-looking, so it would be from this day forward. So if you were to issue new debt today, or next year, or the year after that to help fund projects, then that debt would be eligible to be included in the, in the calculation. If it's debt that's already occurred and is in the books, because that's behind us, then it would be included in the buy-in, but not the incremental, because the incremental's only looking from this point forward.
So then, for example, with the buy-in approach, do we necessarily still have to have that nexus between the project and the growth?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's, that's where we went and we looked at, was the total capacity of the system itself, and then how many units can be served through that capacity to make sure that we have that, that rational nexus, that a new development is going to place this much demand, they're going to use up this much of the existing capacity in the system, so that we are meeting that, that rational nexus.
So are there any variables that may not be in the packet, or, you know, that we heard today that might lower or raise the impact fee recommendation?
You could, if there were additional construction work in progress that we didn't take into account, that would certainly factor in and could, could raise the value of the system and, and result in a higher fee. If the debt had been refinanced to a lower debt, you know, the, the debt service, that would affect the calculation somewhat. If the engineers went back and looked at the, the water master plan and sewer master plan and said, you know what, we're not really sure that that is an appropriate calculation of the flows per equivalent dwelling unit, that master plan's a couple of years old, we've seen more conservation, therefore we can serve more units out of, out of the, of capacity in the system, then that would, that would cause the fee to lower. Vice versa, if we're saying, you know what, they were too conservative with their estimate, their households are actually using more water than what's said in the master plan, then the flip side would be true, you serve less, less units from the available capacity, some of those kinds of things.
Thank you.
When you, on the sewer side, when you did your asset valuation, you took into account the riverfront, the new riverfront facility?
Yes.
And that, that then impacts the capacity fee that we charge based off the cost of that facility?
It does.
And the cost of the, the valuation of our Mingus facility, right?
Right, right, it did. So it had, we had to make sure we did the same thing on both sides of the equation, if you will. So we had the 12 and a half million cost of that plant, so we added that into the numerator to the value of the system, but at the same time, that plant also added 300,000 gallons of additional treatment capacity, so we had to add that to the denominator as well to make sure that we were recognizing that, yes, there is an asset here, but it also provides additional capacity. The, the dollar value per unit of capacity with that new plant was higher than under the, the existing plant.
Right.
So that's why it was a higher fee when we were just looking at it. When we pulled it in, you had 1.5 million gallons of capacity at a lower treatment cost per unit than the new plant, so that pulled the, the fee down when we went with the, the buy-in approach and had the averaging, if you will, of the, of the plant costs.
So you're averaging essentially the, the two facilities, then?
It's a weighted average, yeah, because it's the, the value of the existing plant at 1.5 million gallons per day, and then the value of the new plant at 300,000 gallons per day. So when you divide the total cost, the total value by the total capacity.
Okay. It just seems unlikely, I mean, I can't see the future, but I doubt we're going to build another facility that costs as much to process, you know, a gallon of, of sewer as that one does, if you do it on a, you know, per, per gallon basis. So I want to make sure we're not, you know, collecting too much, providing the best value on the capacity fees as possible, so that the capacity, you know, we have the fund available when, when we need to build a new facility. However, I don't think we're going to build such a Cadillac facility, but I don't, I don't know, I can't speak for future councils, but it seems like you probably don't need more than one of those
Right.
in any given community our size.
And that, and that was part of the discussion that led us to go back and, and say, we really should be looking at the buy-in approach, because it's not really going to be the $6,000 per capacity valuation. It is the, the 4,500. And Rudy has indicated there are some additional costs that need to be done to the existing plant to bring it up to some higher standards. Again, those are non-growth-related costs, so that's not going to be included in the capacity fees, but there is, there is some work to be done there. And the other thing that we looked at is, we can't say, well, development A, your flow is only going to be treated by the new plant, and development B, yours is only going to be treated by, it's going to be a combination of the two.
Right, okay.
Which is, again, another reason for us to go to the buy-in approach and use a, a weighted average
Okay.
valuation of, of the system.
So would we then not be able to use any of the capacity fees collected if we move forward with this to do any repairs or alterations to our existing Mingus facility?
Not to do any repairs and maintenance, no. It would be if you were to expand the collection system, or you had to do another expansion of some kind, either at the treatment plant itself or some other aspect of the system, it could be used for that, but not for repair and replacement or upgrades to the existing.
Okay. And then does this inhibit our ability to move forward with, with development agreements with builders if there's a, you know, a new development that comes to town and we necessarily haven't collected enough capacity fees to put in all the infrastructure? Can we still work out a develop, this may not be a question for you, it's why I'm kind of looking at our attorney at the same time, but are, would we still be able to work out a development agreement with that developer to have them put on the onsite improvements?
Mr. Mayor, we would. That, that's always an option, and I think it bears mentioning as, as part of this conversation that the vineyards has, we have fixed the, the fees that they will pay for utility service by, by development agreement, and 89 and Vine, the model they're going to use, is they're actually going to construct their utility infrastructure and dedicate it to the city. So neither of those developments would be subject to these fees.
Also Mesquite Hills has a development agreement that covers their investment in terms of capacity fees as well. So a lot of this is going to be for infill projects at this point. And certainly, as Steve indicated, the, you know, if we have a large project come in and develop, there's always the opportunity to create a development agreement.
What about the, is it inspiration?
Inspiration would be subject to the capacity.
They, they would?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just have a question, though, back on that buy-in approach, because the materials in the packet list that it's for existing infrastructure that has capacity. So if we needed to extend our infrastructure for water, would we have to use a different approach or, or a separate fee?
For the water side, we're looking at the incremental approach, so we're, we're looking at the expansion of the water system. Am I confusing things here?
No, you're right. I, I should have looked at my notes first. So for, then for our sewer?
Yes.
If it's for our existing infrastructure, if we needed to expand that, how do we, you know, how do, do we then do a different type of, of fee? And maybe that's...
Okay. So the way, there's a little bit of a disconnect between the two there. So the capacity fees are, are to be used only for providing the funding for infrastructure needed to serve new growth, whether it's the physical assets themselves or, or the debt service. So the fact that we're at a point right now where we're not projecting any sewer-related expansion over the next 10 years, that drives us towards the buy-in calculation in terms of developing what your fee is. Once you've got that fee established and you're connecting, collecting those revenues, if there is a need for expanding the system later on down the road, those are eligible to be used for that expansion down the road. And then the next time the fee gets updated, you will go through a similar process to what we did now, where we said, where are you at in terms of available capacity in the system versus what needs to be built going forward? Is the buy-in still the approach that we need to use that makes the most sense, or should we switch to an incremental approach? So the, the approach that's used to, to calculate the fee doesn't dictate that you can only use it for existing assets, or you can only use it for, for incremental assets going forward, is what makes the most sense in evaluating your system to develop what that capacity cost is.
Okay.
And, and just to clarify your, your question and, and what you mean by expansion, are you talking about expansion of capacity or expansion in terms of reach to new developments?
Just the infrastructure, because there is that explanation in the packet that just says that it's, you know, the buy-in is for existing infrastructure which has capacity, not so much, you know...
Sorry, let me jump.
Not so much additional new infrastructure, and that, that explains it. If we're looking at a 10-year picture, it sounds as though our infrastructure is covered through either, you know, existing infrastructure or the development agreements that we have in place that you just referenced. Does that clarify that?
Yeah, and this, again, this deals with capacity, so if somebody builds, you know, a block away from the closest sewer line, they would have to extend that line to meet, so...
Okay. That, that helps, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from council? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Mayor, counsel, at our next regular meeting, which will be the 15th, we'll be bringing the notice of intent for council to go ahead and look over and approve, and then we can, we start the process of the public hearing shortly after that.
Okay. And this is just for the benefit of the public and the viewing audience, this is something that came up during our strategic planning process. It's been on our radar for a couple of years, and really longer than that, certainly something staff's been working on for a lot of years, but does fall in line with council's goals and objectives. Are there any members of the public tonight that would like to address council on this item? You have another opportunity on the 15th, Mr. Turbell? If you wouldn't mind, please fill out a form, and your time is limited to five minutes when addressing council.
Yes, I'm Phil Turbell. I live in Clarkdale. I own property and a business here in Cottonwood. I do understand that this has been on the agenda since they've been appealed, repealed, a couple of, three years, five years ago, whatever it's been. I do think that I have some concerns about, the first we heard about it was April the 24th, 14 days ago. It's gone the agenda now for a week from today, to be back on the agenda to move forward. The way I look at that schedule, if you move forward with a notice of intent, then it's a 60-day window to the public hearing and adopt an ordinance approving the fees, and a 30-day window for adoption. These fees could be effective August 15th in 90 days. My concern is that there's several projects around town that are much more calculated out farther than 90 days. I'm affiliated with one program that I'm selling houses. They've got seven houses in the pipeline for delivery out as far as 12 months from now. Those homes have been priced to the consumer. There's a contract drawn. This calculation didn't go into that. I don't know that 90 days is sufficient time to be looking at this. I really think you need to consider possibly a longer window if this moves forward. Couple of other items that I wanted to talk about was, this is a pass-through tax to consumers. This is not a tax or a fee that's paid by the developer or the builder, it's passed through. It's added on to a house no differently than... It's added on to a house, no differently than the 3% sales tax, the 1% construction tax that Cottonwood collects, the fire sprinklers that are required mandated, this new cap, capacity fee. Those fees will be totaling somewhere in excess of $13,000 on new, every new house being built. When we're looking at the affordability index for Cottonwood, I know that that's also discussed at the retreat. I know that's also high on the agenda is to try and look at the affordability index for Cottonwood. I think that that additional $13,000 in cost is making it more and more unaffordable to own a home in Cottonwood. I think we're becoming a more elitist community for that reason. I think we're locking out a certain segment of the economy. The last point I'd like to bring up is the buy-in debt service cost on the wastewater side was not a consideration when the riverfront park facility was approved. And now that debt is being pushed into the, forward, into this fee, and it doesn't seem to be appropriate that new construction would pay for a plant that's almost operational now, when they're not the ones that were creating the need for it. That decision was made before this impact or capacity fee was considered. That's all I had, if any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Any questions? Thank you for your time. Would you care to answer his concerns about the 90-day window and maybe clarification on the riverfront plant as well?
Clarification on the 90-day window? You know, it's like everything else, there's no good time, there will always be construction in progress. There is a 90 days, 45 days, 120 days, 360 days. There's always construction going on, so someone will be affected by it regardless of when we do this. There's a process that we're following, a timeline that we're following, and we're probably looking at, I think I mentioned, probably possibly around October. So that's where we sit, stand on that. There's basically always going to be something going on, there's always going to be something in the hopper. As far as the buy-in approach, your dimension was only on the $12.5 million of the wastewater treatment plant. Well, the buy-in approach takes into account the entire project, not necessarily, the entire system, not necessarily just the 12, the riverfront plant. So it's taking into account the entire cost of the system. So it's not, you know, the $12.5 that's been added in for the wastewater treatment plant really is not much of a factor. As a matter of fact, it actually, that's what we use to go ahead and leverage the cost down on it. And as far as the sales taxes, you know, there's municipalities that charge $13,000 just on impact fees alone. Actually, we're on the lower end, as you notice in the charts out there, we're on the lower end of capacity fees or impact fees, so we're not in too bad shape. Bottom line is, we either charge something of this, capacity fees, so that we can develop our system or expand our system in the future, or we're going to go ahead and burden our current users to try to develop that, that money for the future. It's one or the other. And the way I see it is, I think if you have a new development, or you're building new homes, you need to pay into the capacity rather than us charging each and every one of us in here or to pay for that person's capacity.
All right. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to address council? Certainly have another opportunity on the 15th, I believe is when it'll come back, so... All right. Next up is 2019 budget scenarios with projected sales tax increase. If you don't mind, Kirsten, just before you get started here, I got a request to speak from a Joe Bauer, and the subject matter was Cottonwood Rec Center's status. Okay, and so we won't actually, it's not on the agenda tonight, so we can't discuss that. And there's not a general call to the public tonight at tonight's meeting. So I'm only saying this now because I don't want you to be disappointed at the end of the meeting when we can't have you get up to speak. It's a, I'm glad you're here for the presentation, so certainly stick around. You bet.
Hello, Mayor, Council, I am Kirsten Lennon, County Budget Manager for the city. We had brought you information last work session on the budget where we were, and we brought you the unbalanced budget, and we said we'd bring back some ideas for you. So first, I'm just going to give you some information upfront. We had talked about sales tax, so we want to do some comparisons and show you the different sales tax in the different neighboring cities, cities about our size. And of those cities, which ones have not only a sales tax, but a property tax? And the city of Cottonwood doesn't have a property tax. So in comparison, you can see that the majority of the people that are the same size, same rate of sales, who have the same or higher sales tax rate, also have a property tax that funds certain projects and things for their city. So we're a full-service city, we always say that when we're comparing to other cities. They don't all have the same services we do. So you can't compare Sedona to Cottonwood, or Clarkdale to Cottonwood, really because they don't provide as much, as many services as we do. We have, you know, the general government, we have a library, we have a rec center, we have water and wastewater, we have transit, we have a cemetery, we have an airport. The other cities don't provide all those services. Sedona does not have, the airport is funded privately, their library, their fire district are all separate. Same thing with Clarkdale. They don't have, the fire district is paid for for property tax, and it's separate from their city. And as you know, they closed their pool this last year, and closed their library, and then the friends of the library came in and reopened it and got it functioning again. So we really provide a lot of services currently on a 3% sales tax. So we came to you on the 24th and we had that ugly little negative number of one and a half million. Not little, but ugly. And when we talked, we said, okay, we're going to remove the COLA, we're going to remove the longevity. And we went back in and removed those two things, and we also moved out the FEMA grant. Because after talking to the city engineer, he said it probably wouldn't happen within the next year anyway. So we removed that matching, which was $680,000 for that matching, because he said there's, you know, even if he applies for it now, he won't be getting that money until 2020. So we removed that from the budget as well, which got us down to a negative of $491,000. So that's a little bit more manageable, obviously. We also wanted to give you, you know, these are the projections of what sales tax would be based on next budget year's estimate of what sales tax is going to be. So at 3%, we estimate that will bring in $15 million. If we raise it by 0.25% to 3.25, it would bring one and a quarter million. If you raise it by a half, it brings in 2.5 million. If you raise it by 0.65, it brings 3.25 million, and so on.
Just real quick, too, I'd like to remind the council, and this will be reconfirmed as we go on, that that $491,000, that's still remaining, what we would need to do to balance the budget is to go back to the department heads and say you need to cut by this percentage, or start looking at particular programs that we could cut out that would get us down to a zero budget. Also remembering that that means all the capital requests, reclassifications, new personnel, none of those would be funded.
So that takes me to scenario one.
I jumped ahead.
You jumped the gun. Killing my thunder, he's not letting me speak. Obviously, it will require cuts. You can do it, I mean, it's possible, we could cut. And I have given you all printouts with just a suggestion. I am not saying that this is cut in stone, this is what we're going to do if we decided to do all these things. This is just an idea, this is just one way of solving these issues. So please don't take this as because it's on this piece of paper, it's happening. And we have told department heads the same thing, that, you know, just because we've made these scenarios does not mean that this is in the budget, or not in the budget. So in number one, scenario number one, it's no sales tax increase, which means we have to come up with $491,000. That's no additional capital requests, that's no reclassifications, no new personnel. And I have listed a number of things that we could remove from the budget to get down to a balanced budget of zero. And some of those things are revenues and expenses. So the cost that you see on your sheet is the net. You know, if we don't do TBR, we don't pay the expense, we also don't get the revenue. So really, it's only a $10,000 savings, because that's really all that was paid for after everything. So, you know, you can read down the list, I didn't want to put that in front of you because it would have been really tiny, and you would not have been able to see it. So that's scenario number one. And it is possible, but it will require cuts, it will require services to be stopped, things to not happen that we have done in the past.
Can I ask a question about scenario one, or would you prefer that we wait until the end of the presentation?
Whatever is easiest for you guys.
Do you have a breakdown or historic information about how the undesignated reserves council, that $100,000, has been allocated?
The $100,000 that's in there, it's always just been put in there as a discretionary for council. Like if we get through the budget process, and we've got a zero-balanced budget, and the council says, oh, well, we want to do this. We can take that from that undesignated reserve and still have a balanced budget.
So there's some flexibility there?
I think last year, we took something out of the undesignated reserves that we needed to happen at some point in the budget process.
And Kirsten, there's other, I mean, like you said, sticking with this, because I was very upset when I saw all these scenarios, and it doesn't have anything to do with TBR. I mean, I know people probably think that, but it doesn't. I think there were, there are other things that could be cut. I just, I think there could have been other options listed. And so, you know, I think it's important as we go through this to remember that there's other options. It doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, removing the senior center. I think, I think things were picked that are kind of, that heart, well, how can you do that? How can you remove the senior center? You know, where there's possibilities that other things, you know, we could, and I'm just going to say it, staff's here, we could reduce the merit by a percentage or something, and get $100,000 or something. So there's other options on here, and this was, to me, upsetting to see it, and it's something like that wasn't said in what we got. So I'm glad to hear you say that.
Yeah, I mean, I did just, I went down and went, okay, how can I get $491,000, easy? It was like, this is what I know we could cut right now, today. These are the services, these are the things we could take out, and we would be at a zero-balanced budget.
And I agree with Councilmember Altus, when I first read the list, it seems as though we're, our suggestions that were being presented with, remove many of the things that make Cottonwood a community that we all want to live in. So, you know, I don't know that we have many suggestions here that weren't tugging at your heartstrings. I mean, the youth center, you know, that's another one, along with the senior center, so...
Right, and, you know, a veterans event, I mean, it's only $2,000, but, I mean, we know how much, you know, I feel we owe our veterans and our seniors, but I just, I feel like it was kind of a... They were picked for a reason, and...
It wasn't intended that way.
I'm glad to hear that, and I believe you.
I wasn't like trying to make you guys go, oh, no, we feel guilty. I was just going, okay, we need to take $491,000, what is some way? Because I was just doing it for myself, I didn't ask other, the departments, you know, what would you be willing to give up at this time? We had, I had a week to do it in and get a presentation ready. So it was like, okay, I'm going to sit down and I'm just going to do this right now. And these are the things that could easily come out of the budget that I wouldn't have to go back to the department and say, okay, now you tell me what, how you're going to cut 5%.
So if this option was selected, you would go back to the departments and say, how are you going to cut 5%?
Yeah.
You know, and I think, I think it's important to recognize that regardless of what you cut, there's going to be an impact. And, you know, for the last four or five years, we've gone back to department heads and said, cut.
I understand.
And we're at the point now where we can't cut anymore unless we're cutting personnel or programs. And so regardless of what you cut, I mean, even if you begin to cut employee pay, there's a negative to that. You know, we're not going to be as competitive as maybe we could be. So, you know, there's, it's just, who's goose is going to get going?
I just want to make sure I understand, and I have the same questions for, you know, the other scenarios, because I'm not happy about a couple of things on the other scenarios either. But that it wouldn't be, okay, we picked this one, and then this is, this is it. You picked this, and we're getting these things.
And there could be discussion of programs that perhaps we need to walk away from, or other alternatives. We're not necessarily, I mean, this, there is wiggle room in this scenario, I think is just what I'd like to confirm.
Yes, these are just ideas, these are not set in stone, so the cuts would not be what actually happened. We would have to discuss what was happening. I mean, this is just, you said, give us ideas, show us what could happen. So I'm showing you, here's if we don't do anything, we have to cut. If we do do 0.25, this could be afforded. That doesn't mean that we're actually going to put that in there. It's just a plan of action that could be put into place.
Thank you.
In fairness to Ms. Hastings, you were directed by council at our last budget meeting to not look at the merit program. And I agree with you, I think we can look at that as an option still. I'm not talking about eliminating it, but that $491 shortfall that we're at now, I think our merit program fully funded this year is $460,000, somewhere around there. So I mean, that, you know, I still think it's worth looking at. You know, I think it's still a program that could be beneficial to employees, and yet provide us a little bit of buffer. But the council collectively gave direction to you to not...
And I was just using that as an example. It seemed, in this scenario, it was, you know, those heart, those heart-wrenching services and not other things, it's all, you know, let's say...
It's what we do, though. I mean, you know, it's not, there was no intent to pull your heartstrings, it's what we do. We provide services. And, you know, eventually, you've either got to cut some of those services out, or you've got to look at revenues. And I think the message here is, we exist on 3%. And we do, we provide more services than any other city in the Verde Valley. And do we want to still provide that level of service?
Okay, I have a problem with that, because yes, we provide services, but we, you know, we still need to make sure we're taking care of our seniors in our community. And why are we only taking care of our employees? Why are we not looking at, you know, dropping that 1%? I mean, all I'm saying is drop it down 1%, maybe you save $60,000 or $100,000. All I'm saying is, you know, instead of cutting the senior center, maybe we cut a percentage off of the merit increase. That's all I'm saying, there's other things that we could look at.
And I'm not arguing with you, council member, I'm just saying that regardless of what you do, there's going to be consequences.
I agree, I agree.
What is the $20,000 outside agency council? I thought we did line items, is there a separate?
There's, that line item of $20,000 is the Old Town Center for the Arts that has been paid out of that outside agencies line.
Actually, on the positive side, on this big list here, I don't see anything about the Recreation Center.
Yeah, I didn't include closing the river center.
I had some concerns about that, I don't see it here, so that's a little gray as sunshine, right?
That's self-preservation, I think.
Yeah. So that crowd doesn't, you know... So, I mean, obviously, like I said, these are just ideas. These are not set in stone. Then I went to scenario two. And again, we still have that 491 negative, because I'm saying we leave the budget as it is right now with the 491 negative. We increased sales tax by 0.25%, which brings us additional revenue of 1.25 million. So then you have $761,875 left over after you get rid of the deficit. And we have talked in the previous discussions how we really, the finance department really thinks it's important we put some money aside in reserves. So the first thing I did was say, okay, 25% off the top, we're going to put that in reserves. And so that's $313,000. And then I just took some things that you could put in there if you felt like it as ideas, as this is the, how you could use some of that other money, if that was what you chose, obviously. So these were just some of the things. And that could fund, what is that, 21, 35, 39? Almost 40 reclassifications of employees. To one new employee as a building official, which was a priority that, you know, everyone thought was a priority was the building official since with all the new growth. And then City Hall, I know that that's a controversial one, too, but it's $120,000. So you could cover $120,000 with the City Hall or $120,000 worth of other capital requests. And you would still have a little bit of money left.
I just, on this one, and I, you know, I'm sure you know, it's me. I think just presenting to the public and presenting to us as, you know, residents, putting a City Hall, we're going to raise your taxes so we can build or have this, this City Hall. I have a, I have a problem with that as a resident. I think putting streets or sidewalks, it would have been a better choice. Because I've heard from citizens, oh, so you're going to raise my taxes so you can build this big City Hall. You know, and I'm like, you know. So I, I think people are more concerned about our streets and our sidewalks and our stuff like that than, than, at least the people who talk to me than they are about a City Hall. So that was on this one, really where I was like, what?
I received the same comments from people from around town.
I'm glad it's not just people I know that.
It's not.
So, or, or put more in, or put more in reserve was another thing I heard of. You know, why not put more money in reserve so we have, we can build that reserve back up? And I know, you know, 25% is just, you know, you just grabbed a number.
Right.
But you could raise that to 30% or 30, you know, 35%.
And anything we, so if we, if we raise sales tax and we say, what if we, you know, we raise sales tax, we say, well, no, you're not getting any of these personnel or you're not getting any of this capital. We're just going to put it all in reserves. We're going to clean up the deficit and put it all in reserves. Okay, that's what we do.
Right.
And it's this, I mean, you're coming up with a list of suggestions.
Right.
And it's really this body at the end of the day that makes those decisions. So if it's, if it's not a priority to us to put money aside for City Hall, and I agree with you, the optics of that looks bad, we're going to raise your sales tax. So even though for years and years, Cottonwood residents have been complaining about streets, sidewalks, we're going to go ahead and remodel a facility for our public uses as a City Hall. I, I agree with you there. It was a suggestion. And I don't think it's a bad suggestion. It's just, you're coming up with a list, you're doing the best you can. It's this body at the end of the day that needs to make those hard calls.
I don't mean to beat up on you. I, I myself got beat up out in, in public and, and, you know, I've told you all, I stay home, you know.
I was prepared.
So I, I'm not, I'm not beating you up. I'm just relaying what, you know, when I did leave the house, what, what I, what I got from, from people is, you know. And it's my veterans. You know, my seniors are the ones that are saying, so you're, you're going to raise my taxes, you know, to build a City Hall. And I said, no, it has to be approved. But when it's on paper like this and it's out on our website, if people think that that's really what's going to happen. So that was it.
But I want you to know, I'm not personally beating you up.
I don't take it personally.
Good, good. Okay. So then I did the next scenario, and that's the 0.5% increase in sales tax, which gets us up to 3.5%. And again, that brings in $2.5 million more. So you have to take that, you know, we're still staying with that. We have a deficit of 491,000 and we're getting rid of that. And then, so we have a balanced budget. And then I recommend again, do 25% off the top for reserves. And you split it up. You do 50% to the general fund and 50% to streets. And then that, you know, would help cover the, what you guys had suggested last year on pavement preservation would help with funding that pavement preservation every year. We also decided, well, public safety retirement, unfunded liability is large. Let's, let's say we'll, we'll put 10% towards that as well and we'll start paying that down a little faster. Because that seems to be something that is, you know, on everybody's mind, too, is that unfunded liability for public safety retirement. And then same person, same reclassifications, new personnel. The only thing that was added in this, this scenario was the business analyst and then one maintenance technician for the streets, for the maintenance department. And then, again, there was a listing of basically number one priorities on the over and under $35,000 capital. And I just basically randomly picked the over and under that were like the number ones and the number twos that would fit within that dollar value. Just to show you that, you know, we could, we could fund these requests. Then I took the 0.65% sales tax. Same scenario, you know, you have to cover that 491. And then you would end up with 2.7 million left over new revenue. And again, 25% into reserves, split between general fund and HERF. And then public safety is 10%. And more ideas of this is what you could fund for capital, which is why I printed out the list for you guys. You could go, no, don't want that. Yes, want that. You know, so you could actually sit there and talk about or look at what you would want or not want in the budget. So the 0.65 would get us up to 3.65, which is similar to Parkdale?
Camperdy.
Camperdy. So then I did 1%. This is just a drill. That would obviously get us up to 4%. And that's pretty high. And it brings in quite a bit of extra revenue, additional revenue. And every scenario, I made sure we did 25% to reserves, 1% to public safety. And then just added in more of the capital that was on the list and the positions that were requested. And that one leaves, you know, a $1.1 million reserve, additional reserve that we could do. Because this is all the number ones and number three, through number three of the capital requests and all the personnel and all the reclassifications included. So just as an idea.
Can you speak a little bit about the other communities in our area that are, in the state that are putting money aside for PS, for the public safety, personal retirement liability?
Everybody has a different idea. Some people have said that they want to pay it off and they've paid off what the current unfunded liability is. Some people are like us, where we're just like, we're going to pay it down over the 30-year period. It, it just kind of depends on if you have the funds available and what your theory is on whether that's going to grow, which it probably will, or if it's going to, you know, remain the same. So it's really across the board. There is no, like, everybody's doing this or it's all over.
Just a correction, we're on the 20-year plan.
On the 20-year plan, sorry.
But you feel like 10% of any potential increase is better than nothing?
It's better than nothing. We are currently paying our employer portion upfront, which is like 1.4 million. We pay that at the beginning of the year. So then it sits there and gains interest all year, which helps take down the unfunded liability. So then I, I just also included the personnel request again for you, the reclassification request again, just to have it in there for you to look at, to show you that this is what we put in the budget or in these, some of these scenarios. And then obviously, the capital over 35, and I marked out that we're not doing the FEMA. And the ones that are highlighted green are already in the budget because they're grant-funded projects.
Got it.
For streets, like, you know, finishing on me this and those things.
That's what that's about. Okay.
There's quite a few requests there. So these scenarios are just ideas. But we do need to have some direction on where you want us to go so that we can start planning on, because we do have to have a budget, balanced budget. And it has to be, our tentative has to be adopted by the third week in July. So we need to really work on getting it balanced and getting everything done.
Very good.
Any questions?
Questions for, I just called you Hastings. I'm sorry. I just now realized it. I'm so sorry. Terrible. Ms. Lennon, sorry. So, council, would you like to go ahead and hear from the public?
Yeah.
Okay. So again, folks, there are yellow slips in the back. If you'd like to address council, you're more than welcome to, encouraged to. Just a big, big thank you to the community, really. This, I haven't seen this many folks here for a work session, I don't think, ever. And really, really do appreciate you all coming out, though. These are hard decisions before us, and we rely very much on folks like you to come in and help us make those decisions and find the best course of action here. So do appreciate it. Don't be shy if you want to address us. Just try to keep it under five minutes. We'd appreciate it. So I'm going to go down the...
I've got something else to say. So may I, or?
Yeah, I'm going to call folks up in the order I received these slips. So you'll, you'll have an opportunity. Thank you. So up first is Mr. John Mitchell.
Can, can, Tim?
Yes.
Mayor, can we make, ask people if they live within the city or where they live? I know you have the forms, but the three of us never see them.
If you would, State.
So if we could ask everybody, just if you live within the city or, or, you know, where you live. Thank you.
Yeah, John Mitchell, I live in Cottonwood. I have addressed this, you all, a number of times in regards to, and sent you a number of items that I've pulled off the internet and through some research and so forth. But before I begin, and I, I know already with the research I've done, I want to apologize to begin with, because, man, I've got a raft of information here that I need to share with you all. As leaders in the, in the community, I feel it's incumbent upon me to bring these things to your attention. Because you're the ones that are going to be making the decisions that are going to affect us all. And one of the things that motivated me to come tonight was, well, let me back up for a moment. If, if you recall, I've been sending a lot of you information. Some of you responded, some of you didn't. Those who you, who responded, I want to thank you that you did. And some of you were, were very kind and wanted to engage me a little bit in some of these facts that I've pulled. But nonetheless, in, in pulling all this information, I, I found myself, because I've been in your seats before, or a seat before, in a city this size, and I know some of the decisions you have to make, they're not popular ones. And it's difficult to say no sometimes. And I was encouraged by some of the discussion I've heard already today in regards to, some of you are thinking logically rather than emotionally, which you need to do. I mean, these things that are coming up before you, there's a reason you're facing deficits. And in my own home, I can't run deficits, you know? Okay? And one of the things, well, let me back up. I think in keeping with the comment I just made and the amount of time that I've got to speak, and I apologize for not getting ahead of this and actually asking to be on the agenda, because five minutes isn't going to do this. And since many of you have heard me already, you probably know where I'm going to be going with this stuff. And at the, at the risk of being considered a crank, you know, I still need to say these things so that you can be aware of what I see being a real debacle coming. And again, as Mr. Rodriguez stated, and that was one of the comments I had in regards to this proposed Riverfront Commons purchase you're talking about, he said, we've got to get ahead of this thing. And he addressed the same comments in this proposed tax increase, which is a wise thing to do. But it's much bigger than that, I'm afraid. And what I'd like to do is, I want to ask a rhetorical question before I do, but is it possible for me to get on the agenda so I can address these things?
We don't even know what you're trying to address.
Well, I want to talk about fiscal responsibility and fiscal issues. And some of it was discussed here today. And there's some good dialogue going on. And I commend those of you who had good questions about it, because you've got to question this stuff. I have to in my own personal finances. I've got to decide whether I'm going to do A or B. I can't do both A and B. Right?
This is your opportunity now, so the clock's ticking.
Well, I'm asking you, do I have an opportunity at some point to get on the agenda?
There, there will be public hearings throughout this budget process.
So in other words, I'm limited to five minutes regardless.
But at any time, you can engage any council member during, at any time, which I'd recommend you do. We'd all, I'm sure, be willing to make time to meet with you. But in fairness to the others who are here tonight to engage the council, we try to limit it to five minutes.
Okay. Well, anyway, I had, I had five main points, but there's a lot of material under those five main headings. One is your current water projects rates. Today, there was a presentation given at the Republican Club, and a number of you guys were there and heard some extremely important facts relative to what you're trying to do with your water situation. And if I can direct you back, I'm probably only going to get through one. Am I done now? Is that it? Back in August 2nd, 2017, there was a local, Christopher Graham, the managing editor locally here at the Journal, wrote an editorial in regards to the mismanagement going on at the waste plant and the water plant. I mean, and it was, it was very well-written. It was very factual. But at this point, I guess, am I out of time now?
You are, Mr. Mitchell, but we're going to have another meeting on Thursday, go over the budget. And you're more than welcome to meet with me or any other, I can't offer you other people's time, but certainly email us your concerns and we'll get back to your calls. We can meet with you.
Well, can I make one more statement before I sit down?
Mr. Mitchell, I'm sorry. We're trying to keep it to five minutes.
Sorry.
Thank you. And that will go for all the rest of the folks here tonight to present to us. Terry Clements?
Hi, I'm Terry Clements. I live in Cottonwood, Arizona. I strongly support a 0.65% sales tax increase for a number of reasons. But I just wanted to reinforce a couple of things first for everybody. It has been a decade since the downturn, a decade that we've had to tap into reserves that somebody in prior times was smart enough to set up so it would be there when we had a major downturn. There will be another downturn. Kristin pointed out that what we survive... Kristen pointed out that what we survive on as a town primarily is sales tax. She also pointed out that most of the other towns in the Verde Valley have a sales tax plus a special district or property tax from the city. We don't have that, but we supply tons and tons of services. So, we're in the awkward predicament in my mind of being way low on the sales tax relative to everybody else in the Verde Valley, providing more services and having no property tax or special district tax. So, as far as I'm concerned, it looks like we have, you know, we're overdue an increase in the sales tax. And the reason we are is we need to build adequate reserves, I think that was addressed, but it's gonna be important. We're 10 years into a recovery, what does that mean? We're 10 years closer to the next downturn. It will happen. We need to pay down liabilities, whether those liabilities are unfunded pension liabilities or whether those liabilities are debt. And I think the council should look at both of those scenarios. And we need to take care of deferred maintenance, whether that's sidewalks and roads, whether that's tennis courts at the rec center, whether that's other things at the rec center that need doing, we need the money for that as well. So to say, "Oh, we're gonna get an extra $3.5 million," we have been cutting the budget every year for a decade because our revenues have gone down for almost a decade. So there are things that we haven't done. And as an individual, I would be saving for a rainy day, and the city needs to save for a rainy day. And also, and this is a point too that I, I think we need to look at, how about investing in our future? How about investing in retaining the status as an economic center, which is what we say we wanna be in our vision statement and in our mission statement? Camp Verde's right on our tails. We've got a new road that's being built out there, they're very active, they've got a 3.65% sales tax, which is what I'm saying we should match, and not just to match it, but so that we can be competitive. What if a lot of our retail sales start to migrate out towards Camp Verde, into Camp Verde and away from Cottonwood? Some of our new retail opportunities, we're gonna be hurting. I mean, so I think these are all things that we need to think about. Thank you.
All right, we have Mr. Joe Bauer, you're up next.
I think I have an easy question, which I'm sure you'd like to hear tonight. All these scenarios that were presented, is that gonna become public information at some point, so that people have an idea of what's gonna be cut? And if you want a consensus, that's the only way you're gonna get consensus, is if people realize what they may be losing if we don't do anything?
It's all public information, absolutely, it's available, I believe, on the website, available here tonight, so absolutely, it's public information.
Anything in the newspapers or anything?
I think the papers have done a exceptional job, that, that, both papers are represented here tonight at getting the word out about this, so...
Well, it seemed to me more detailed tonight than what I've been reading, so, just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Phil Trubell.
I understand your dilemma, I don't have a solution and I don't have an opinion on the solution. I only have one observation that I'm concerned about, and that is the taxation on food. I think we are one of the few communities that tax food, and that's, makes us a very regressive tax to our lowest income in our community. And our community is 30,000-plus, our community is not 11,000 that live in the town of Cottonwood. Our community of 30,000 pays this tax, and this higher tax is gonna become regressive. And I would consider that some consideration be put in there for removal of food tax. Thank you.
Thank you. Folks, I'm all, all out of yellow forms, but there's an awful lot of here tonight. Don't miss an opportunity to address your council, you're more than welcome to.
I just have a question.
If you would, ma'am, please come up, you'll still need to fill out a form for us, please.
I do, yeah.
Yes.
Can I do it after?
Absolutely.
Once you approve your budget, I'm Lorraine Adesso, and I'm from Cottonwood. Once you approve your budget and you say that there's money in there for the library and the rec center, how can we be assured that money will stay there for those things and now five years down the road or three years down the road you say, "Oh, we gotta cut the rec center because we wanna do something else with that money." Can you tell me how we can be certain that that, you will follow that budget?
You have to keep showing up year after year, keep your eye on us.
Don't worry.
You know, that, we, this is, this is a process that we go through every year, is to present the public with a balanced budget. This year in particular, we've, we've really slow-played it, and we've had a lot of meetings, a lot of public meetings, and really trying to present council a bigger, broader picture on what, you know, what our budget constraints are and how we can find solutions. So unfortunately, next year, we're going to be doing the same process all over again, and this is really the most important thing that your council does for you. But are there any guarantees? There really, truly never are, we're elected, any one of you could run for office and, and be up here making these decisions, and you might decide to take the city in a different direction. So, year after year, it's important to keep, keep engaged with your council and let us know what your concerns are so we can make sure that we present you with a budget that reflects our community's concerns.
Yeah.
Yes.
And, and I would love to say that we could, we as a council here, if we're unanimous, would be able to say the rec center is gonna be ours in Tupp forever. But the council's not allowed to tie the hands of future councils. That's one of the tenants that we have to abide by, because we don't know what's gonna happen down the road. Do we wanna keep our rec center? You bet I think everybody on this council knows the value of that recreation center and knows the value of our library. However, there are constraints that we have to follow as well.
And I have never seen people with signs.
Ask for a tax increase.
25 years and I haven't either. It's like being at a ballgame.
So, council, we have, we have to give the finance department some direction here on what direction we wanna go, so...
All right. Can I borrow one of your signs so I can hold it up?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Could we possibly address this on the next meeting and give us time to go over these options and such?
I'm sorry, I can't hear Ruben, I can't hear you with all the talking, so...
I'm just asking to put this on the future agenda and not make this, these decisions. Well, first of all, we're in a work session, we can't make a decision anyway. But to give us time to, to look at this, we, we know July, whatever the date it was that you need to have your...
Third week.
Third Monday in July.
Okay. So I, I don't plan, it's gonna take us that long, but I would like to study some of this.
Okay. We'll have another meeting on Thursday, so I'm assuming we're gonna be narrowing in on our direction.
We, we have another meeting on Thursday, and we have all the outside agencies, senior center, the domain society, the chamber, everyone's been invited to come and give you a presentation, because you requested.
On Thursday?
On Thursday.
Okay.
I, I'd like to, though, tonight, at least try to get a sense from council so that, you know, finance department can either, you know, let department heads know to prepare for major cuts, or, you know, to prepare maybe a little bit more information on what an increase would look like, and maybe try to hone in on that a little bit more. So if we could just maybe go around and talk about how we're leaning?
I think I...
I think that we'll be making a decision tonight.
Exactly.
Okay, well, I'm fine with...
I agree, I'd like to go back and, and now that we have all this information and now that the public, this didn't become available until, you know, we've talked about this before, late on Friday, that, I mean, I think we need to, to go out and talk to our constituents and, and go through, really go through this and, and lie on him. I think some of us spoke up tonight and, and made, you know, some suggestions, I think, you know, from the public, but I'd like to go out and, and...
Does the rest of the council feel that, same way?
I agree, I have some questions on items, and I think it'd probably be more efficient if I followed up with, for example, Ms. Lennon separately on some of the items I highlighted.
I'm trying to help you here, but...
Thank you. Yeah, please feel free to email me, call me, anything, ask any questions, get clarification on any of the things that are on the list in the presentation, in scenarios, anything. If there's anything you want us to bring back to you on Thursday, let me know, we will, you know, I'll try to make sure that we have it for you.
Okay. And I sincerely hope that members of the public will reach out to council as well with your questions, concerns. Please use us as a resource.
And as well as that, staff is right there for your questions as well. When you come and speak to us, you can go directly to the horse's mouth as well, the people that are working on that budget right now, and contact them, because I believe every one of our finance staff has an open-door policy. You call them, they'll squeeze you in, they'll answer those questions.
And, and again, just to remind the council, these are all just suggestions. And so, but I think the key point is, you know, are we looking at any kind of revenue increase? If not, we, we need to get going on the cuts. If we wanna cut merit, you know, give us a number so we can cut that. If the city hall is off the table, then let's take it off the table and, and move on without that. I think those are probably some of the key issues.
Because we will need time to, you know, get all this, these numbers put together and get it all prepared, because we do have a document that we have to prepare, and all this up in the air makes it really hard to get those into the doc, into the budget document.
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll be about a week doing that next meeting.
All right, then we'll see, hopefully, everyone here again Thursday night, Thursday, this Thursday, 6:00 PM.
Yep.
Yep, thank you. All right, if there's nothing else, I would move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, Mayor, may the motion vice mayor, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.